Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Acton Selectmen's Meeting of May 5th, 2021. First, we'll salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll get started with the town administrator's weekly update.
Good evening, Madam Chair. All right, just a few things. For this week, I think I start out saying that every week, this week it really is just a couple of few. First one, paving update, just to let everybody know that the paving bid has been out, it's been mailed to the companies that you guys decided, and it'll be, I think we posted on the website, it'll run in the newspaper as well, so you should be able to find that. Next is just an FYI that the Planning Board Chair changed the Planning Board meeting tomorrow night to Monday, May 10th. Another one is, you'll see a little later on your agenda, that we're going to make your warrant recommendations, but the Warren Finance did make all of their recommendations, and the Chair actually came in a little early and proofed them, so it looks like everything's good, so we're all set with that. The hope tonight is that you will make all your recommendations and make a motion to sign it, and then hopefully over the next 24 or 48 hours, you can pop in individually and just sign it and be done with it. Next item I wanted to talk to you about was Goat Hill. I've been in communications with Carl Davis, and he is wondering if the town or the Board of Selectmen would consider coming up with some sort of agreement with Three Rivers about really who's doing what on Goat Hill. I mean, since the project started, you know, we purchased the land, and they kind of have maintained it since then, and they've worked on the grants and done everything they could, and they want to continue doing that. But the concern is, is that once this ADA grant is complete, that, you know, a year from now, there might be, you know, trees or branches that need to be cleaned up along the way, that there might be some minor work. He's put out the number of $1,000 of maybe just eventually coming up with an agreement and some sort of small monetary amount to help deal with little things like that along the way, so that Three Rivers isn't always funding it because it is town property. I explained to him where we were in the process, and it was too late for this year's warrant article. Did talk to the Treasurer, and we came up with a couple of possible ideas if something came up that couldn't wait, but it's just something to think about, he's going to, he's taking it back to the entire committee as well, and he just wants to get together and kind of figure out if you can come up with an agreement plan. Do you think that's something you would be interested in doing?
Well, my issue is they, you know, they wanted, I thought they were going to take, you know, they were going to take care of maintaining it and whatnot, it wasn't going to cost the town anything. That's-
And when I had a conversation-
Hasn't so far, and they've-
When I had a conversation with the Treasurer, that was the exact same statement that she made, that it was-
Yeah, that's my only concern.
Sold to the town.
I would, yeah, I would put it in front of the voters.
Right, well, we would have to, yeah, because we can't.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that's my concern. I mean, it's a great piece of property, a lot of people enjoy it, and-
It's beautiful.
And I wouldn't hesitate to vote yes on a small monetary part for it, but I'm just concerned that it was taken on with the understanding that it wasn't going to cost the town anything.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah.
And I don't know if at that time, they weren't aware of how much they were still, how much they were going to do to it. I mean, he really just keeps referencing the trail and the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Like any parking lot, it's a dirt parking lot, is it not?
Yep.
You know, just over time, is it going to need, you know, a little more pressure?
Well, the other ones keep coming up with the projects, right? They keep calling up the projects, and they get bigger and bigger and bigger, and then turn around and say, "Well, we need you all to pay for it." There are ideas in the first place, so.
I mean, there's been, what, well over 100,000, I think, put into-
Between the trail and the parking lot and-
Yeah, toward the trail, you know, from the grants and whatnot.
Oh, the grants, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean-
Well, I'll tell him to put his ideas together as a whole and then come and present it, but he knows that time-wise, nothing, you know, can happen this year.
There's no issues right now anyways, he's talking about later on.
Yeah, he's trying to build a maintenance, he's concerned that something may happen. I mean, they, you know, originally, they had a group of, and I think I brought it to you guys, to see if one of the local schools could do it, and that turned, that fell through on him, you know, so he's got a couple of trees that need to be removed, and, you know, it's a lot of work to find volunteers and have the right insurance and get them out there and do it. Some little things like that, because they've, we've gotten some concerns from residents, and it's town property, that there is a tree that, you know, may be unsafe, it was hit during one of the storms. So if he can't find the school or the volunteers to do it, somebody's got to fix this tree or we're going to shut it down, because it's got to be safe.
Right.
So that's kind of how the conversation started, when he started getting calls.
Liability, we're responsible for liability laws.
We are responsible, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So in this particular tree-
Yeah, if there's a definite hazard up there, then we will have to address it.
Right, and he did, they did take care of this one, but I don't think it's a habit they want to get into going up, doing it themselves, and, right, so.
Yep.
I think, you know, putting in front of the voters would be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Our state representative posted on Facebook that the Town of Acton was getting $261,308 back from the Mayor from Rescue Plan, and we've been inundated with calls and questions about that since, so just wanted to be a bit of clarification. He certainly has that information because he's in Augusta, and the bill was passed and voted on, but the voters and the department heads and everybody that wants a little bit of that needs to know is that the, we're waiting for the state and the federal, the feds to put guidelines on it. They haven't told us what it can be spent for, I mean, they're going, you know, when the bill was originally put together, there were strict guidelines put on it, so it's not like we've already received this check, we haven't seen the money, we haven't gotten any official notification. The original bill also talked about it being split over two years, it being paid out, but it's going to be very strict on what we can, what we can utilize it for, so I just want the, everybody to know that it may be a done deal as far as moving to the next step, but the town has not been notified in any way, so. The Rec Department has been busy this week, been busy assisting them, we've done background checks on everybody that is wanting to coach, so those have been done, they had an extremely large order that we put together, well over $1,000, just to get rid of, ready for everything, you know, from your life stalls to your baseballs to, what else was on the list? I mean, everything, first aid kits.
Mets for the gloves for rain.
Just a big, big order, so it took us a little while to do that. The background check, she asked when I emailed her and told her that they had all been completed, is how long are those going to be good for, and that's a decision that the Selectmen need to make. You know, we want to say it's good for one calendar year, three calendar, you know, three years. If I do a background check on, you know, one of you, how long is it good on file for? Or is it something you want to do for each coach for each season? I mean, maybe you've got Mr. Smith that's willing to coach baseball, soccer, and basketball. Are we expected to do three on him in a year? Or how long?
Well, I would think if you did, I would think one a year. I mean, like in that scenario-
There's no reason to do more than one.
It's going to be ongoing, yeah, there'd be no reason to split it up, it's still all the same type of thing.
So we want to say that the background checks are valid for one year?
I think yearly would be good, I think three would be too far apart.
Yeah, yeah.
So one year from the date they were run.
Yep.
They also need to have a water test done for the new water up at the Rec, see if people can fill their bottled waters when the kids are up there playing, so just going to pick that up at Springville Hardware and get that done. She came in, we've given her all the keys to the gym, concessions, all of that, so Cheryl's actually getting some more keys made tomorrow, but they should be in pretty good, pretty good order from the first of the, as soon as practice is, I think we're getting ready to start if they have any-
That's great. I said, "That's great, be nice to see the kids out playing again."
Yes, it will. Just some update on the zoning board, finding the facts was signed by the Chairman today, so those have been sent off to all the attorneys in the court. Durwood also sent me a copy of consent to sign. They agreed on a briefing order, where essentially both parties agree that the steps, next steps are going to be taken in this court case. They've agreed to submit said documents by a particular date, so it's kind of the first step in the, this is the ongoing lawsuit that was filed, so the consent debrief has been approved by both parties. Fire Chief notified me today that the Johnson &amp; Johnson Clinic is back on for May 25th. We did remove the link from the website, so we will need to work on getting that put back up. Square Pond Improvement Association was in today, inquiring if they could use the hall on June 26th. They were looking at 20 to 40 people, I think, is what their estimate was, so I guess kind of, you know, as-
We're still kind of doing that, can we?
We're still shut down, aren't we?
Well, that's the thing, I don't know, I mean, do I, you know, at some point, I've got to keep asking you, but, I mean, I did, you know, we did tell Zumba a couple of days ago that we were still shut down.
Mm-hmm.
I started, David was the first one here today, we started having a conversation about is there a difference between, you know, I don't want to call them town, because it's private roads, they're something that's not town, but organizations tied to town, is there a difference between Square Pond or Zumba or Birthday Party or-
There shouldn't be any difference.
There shouldn't be any difference between any of them, and that's what we found.
I mean, I wouldn't think so. I mean, and what are the rules right now for inside? I mean, could you even-
Well, if you stop, I mean, if you decide to let people inside, then it's going to be up to the organization to follow the guidelines from the Governor.
Right.
So, you know, masks at six feet, all of that still has to be in place, I mean, I guess the only thing I-
I'm just wondering, how do you get 40 people in here at six feet apart? I mean, you can't, so.
What was the last thing we had in here? Was it last September?
I think it was for the Kane, wasn't it?
Well, we did Ross and Kane kind of during COVID.
Yeah, but that was, we kept a handle on how many people were in here for that.
Yeah, and that was by invitation only by the individuals, so.
That was kind of a town event.
That was a town event, how you look at it, yeah.
I mean, we probably before COVID had a birthday party or something, I mean, you know, there's-
Well, I mean, we had one last September, there was a-
There was something.
There was a birthday-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, there was, yeah.
You know, birthday celebration party.
Well, we remember we had a-
We haven't done anything since, have we?
Yeah, we had a fire rescue member, remember, we allowed that party.
Right, that was in September, so.
Um.
But we really haven't done anything since then, except for Ross and Kane.
Haven't done anything since then, you know, we can, you can-
But we're still trying to shut down.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, honestly, it doesn't look good if we started having things here, like here, we're having our town meeting at the Fairgrounds, so.
Right, I think I'd leave it shut down until the Governor opens things up more.
Okay, so just that I have to keep bringing to you, what's the definition of opening things up more? So she's released her May and June-
Yeah.
Which we know, we really don't-
Which is no masks outside.
No masks outside. Some of the restaurants are changing the capacity, but I don't think that's going to affect us.
Yeah, I think until she opens it up to full capacity in restaurants and whatnot, it stays shut down.
So we'll just keep an eye on the executive orders, and if, I think if it's something that's changed enough, we'll bring it back. In the meantime, we'll just automatically tell people-
Yeah.
All right, now.
We keep you responsible, say they bring in more than 40 people, and-
Yeah.
And we're going to come in and watch and make sure they wear their mask and that kind of stuff, I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've been, we've been on top of it, and fortunate, you know, since this all started, that we've kept a handle on everything, and, yeah.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right. I think we've signed all the warrants and bills?
Yep, I did.
Okay, you need an approval?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Minutes of the last meeting, we're going to table that. Okay. I didn't read them. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't get to it today. I'll make sure I do it next week, I'm sorry. Do we have any department heads or committee chair updates, anybody that? Okay, old business, none. New business, A, Dennis Long email?
If I can, before David takes it over, I just want the minutes to reflect that as your administrator, you know, I'm told to put things on the agenda, people often think that I create this agenda and I put all this on there, I was instructed to put this on the agenda, and that ties that.
Okay, thank you.
So, we received an email after the last Finance Warrant Committee meeting, and this is from our Chair, Mr. Long, and says, "Jen, I am working on the warrants so I can send the recommendations to you. I have a few commitments today, but I'll do my best to get it done. What I said last week about vicious attacks on the warrant finance members, Winchell solidified what I was saying, by the following language that was used against one of our members after the meeting last night. So sad to treat volunteers and senior citizens in this manner. Maybe someday the other Selectmen will put a stop to this abuse. Regards Chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee, Dennis Long." So, I wouldn't have made a big deal out of this, because this is common, but this was emailed out to everybody on the Finance Committee. And the other night, we had the Finance Committee vote, making recommendations on the articles. We were, we were president, present, all the Selectmen were, present at this meeting, and we gave some of our opinions, our views on why we were doing our stuff. At one point in the meeting, one of the members decided to go back 30 years and then up through about every project in the Town Act and being screwed up, and I happened to be part of one of those so-called screw-ups, which I don't believe is a screw-up, but, and made some accusations of us breaking the law and all kinds of stuff that I thought was, wasn't right, that when you, when you're sitting in front of a camera, I try to learn, what I say has consequences. I did, the Speaker, the Chairman did let me speak and rebut what he was saying, I told him that he didn't have his facts right, that I was offended by what was said, and we continued on. He said he didn't mean to offend me, but I did, I did take offense to it, and if anybody watches the video, you will understand why. So after the meeting, they adjourned, we were getting ready to leave, and this member proceeded my way, and I explained to him that I did not want to talk about it. As he grabbed my arm, I turned around and I said, pretty much that this isn't a certain TV show that you watch on TV, that you can't just blurt out whatever you want and think that it's real, that you have to have your facts straight, and what you said wasn't right, and I did, the, what was it? The vicious tack, the language I used, I used the A-words, and I did not call him that, I told him he, I thought he was trying to make us look like that, okay? And then I proceeded to tell him that when he gets his facts straight, then they come and see me, and I left. Our Chairman wasn't in this conversation, obviously didn't get the complete facts, but because this was sent out, I believe this is a vicious attack again on myself, and I had to do what I do and rebut it, because I don't believe it was right. The attacks on the Select Board the other night, I thought, were terrible. We didn't come up to argue, and we didn't argue. As far as I know, every time that I spoke, I asked the Chair if I could speak, and he allowed me. And nothing got out of hand, this was after the meeting, and I did tell him that I did not want to speak about it, he proceeded. So, you can send these emails every week if you want, but at the end of the day, watch the video, the meeting on our part, I thought went well, and I wanted to address that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Flat Ground Road.
Flat Ground Road.
Oh, yeah, so-
Oh, we're good.
So what ended up happening the other night, we, there was a discussion, because the Town of Act and the Finance Committee, we have a member that seems to think that we keep beating this dead horse on Seventh Street over and over and over and over, and one of the members had made a mention about Flat Ground Road, one of the Finance Committee members, and it was addressed to the Chair and asked him, you know, what he thought of that, and one of the other members answered it by, "It's a town road." And I just want to clarify this, because it's about three times now, the same individual has corrected me, and, you know, I have been told many times by certain people up here that I'm always wrong, but I was pretty sure I was right, because this has been over and over and over. So, we had our town lawyer, Mr. Lankowski, I asked him to send us a clarification to make sure that we're all on the same boat. So, says, "Good afternoon, Jennifer, I understand, understand that the Board has requested that I clarify, restate my opinion regarding status of Flat Ground Road. My opinion, Flat Ground Road is currently a private road with a retained public easement based on a discontinuance of the town, the townway by a vote of the town meeting in 1960." Okay, so it is a private road. I've been told this over and over, it's not, it's a town road. So, we have Finance Committee members who are giving out false information, and when I went to answer the question, I was shut down. So I just had to clarify that, just for, because I feel I have to.
Do you want me to finish reading through this?
No, I mean, well, you can if you want.
Yeah, I'm going to, just, just so, you know, because we've been over this several times, and, so anyhow, he goes on to say that "This has been my opinion throughout our discussion regarding Flat Ground Road, going back to 2018. However, I would simply remind the Board that we entered into a, into the 2018 agreement with the landowners on the road to avoid the cost and uncertainty of litigation whether or not the town followed the proper procedures to carry out the 1960 discontinuance. As you will remember, the town's file did not contain significant sufficient, sorry, information for us to determine whether the required notice of discontinuation was given to the abuders prior to the town meeting vote. I hope this is helpful." So, with that being said, let's go on to C. Let's start the warrant recommendations.
Okay, so, as I do often, I've had communications with each of you, just to kind of, just to get an idea of where you are with the warrant articles, so that I can better gauge how you can vote on these. Generally speaking, this is your warrant, so the overall idea is that you're in favor of all of them, but there are a couple of them that we're going to vote on separately, so let's just go through them. We're going to start with the zoning, we're going to do those separately. So starting with Article 10, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following changes to the Town of Act and zoning ordinance as related to construction of the storage buildings. So we're looking for a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the article as written?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? No discussion?
All parties good with discussion?
Nope.
All right, so three to zero, thank you. All right, we're going to jump to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following changes to the Town of Act and zoning ordinance relative to structures
Okay, I guess we're looking for a motion, if anybody.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the article as written?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Opposed, no discussion?
Thank you. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following amendments to the Town of Act and zoning ordinance related to short-term rentals.
Did you skip 12?
Yeah.
Uh, yes. See if the town will vote to adopt the following amendments regarding, in relation to timber harvesting.
So we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve, as written, Article 12.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded, to adopt Article 12, all in favor? All opposed? No discussions?
Perfect. Now, up to 13, which was back to the zoning ordinance, are related to the short-term rentals. So this is the one that there's some, I know that Ed's going to want to abstain, did you decide?
Just keep going.
Well, the motion is going to depend, so somebody in favor of it, or maybe in favor of it, needs, you know, if any of you were in favor, that's the motion that we should start with.
I have some issues with this, so.
Not, David, are you in favor, or do you have issues with it as well?
I have issues with it.
Okay, so unless Ed wants to make a motion for it, how about if you're in favor?
Yeah, I'm not going to make the motion.
So you're going to do ought not to pass?
Oh, not to pass, Article 13 ought not to pass.
Is that the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? And do we have them abstained?
I'm going to abstain from the vote, only because I do own some short-term rentals.
Okay, all right.
So ought not to pass will be two, zero, past one.
Yeah, I feel this needs more work.
Okay, so now, we are going to group together Articles 14 through 36. 14 through 36, this is your warrant, you've written them all, as I understand it, you're all in favor of those. So we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Articles 14 through 36 as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Any conversation?
All right, so Article 13 through 36 will be three to zero. Okay, so that brings us to Article 37. See if the town will vote to raise $370,534 and appropriate 394-728 with $24,194 to be appropriated from the state L.R.A.P. funds received for servicing and reconstruction for the District Two Road Department. Said funds to be distributed after a project list line has been presented to the Board of Selectmen to be expanded as to follow with the breakdown of winter maintenance, summer maintenance, paving and reconstruction of Flat Ground Road. So, as I understand it, you have a couple of different ways that you can handle this, depending on how the other board members feel. Mr. Winchell, do you want to explain to them what your thought is here first?
Well, so, well, I don't know why I didn't catch this earlier, but the issue I had was with the Flat Ground Road 5,000. Now, I understand we've got to maintain the road, I don't understand, I had spoke to the Lankowski for an hour back in the day, and he was, back and forth, town road, not town road, whatever, but at the end of it, he told me that we do not have to do this, because the problem I had with the whole deal was, we have $5,000 here for grading and this and that, but we're not charging, when we went to town meeting, everything was supposed to be paid out of this line item. Unfortunately, we plow on the road and sand on the road and everything else, that's not coming out of this, so it doesn't make any sense to have a line item just for, and it doesn't really give detail of what it's for. So what I would rather do is amend, amend this article, keep the numbers the same, just split the 5,000 between the winter and the summertime meetings, and delete the word and Flat Ground Road.
And we, we can do that?
Well, I mean, you've got-
I mean, is that-
You've got two ways of handling it, I mean, the Warrant Finance has already made a recommendation, so you can go back to them and ask them to make a new recommendation, which would cause them to, you know, have a new meeting and-
Right.
And so forth, to reconsider the article, because it does change, and they have that right. Or you can, just in your recommendation, make the recommendation to amend the article to read and spell it out, or we would take 2,500 and put it in winter, 2,500 and put it in summer, and we would strike out that line altogether.
What do you think about the amended?
Personally, I'd rather see that happen on Town Law.
Yeah, and we can, we can do that.
Rather than-
I mean, this is, this is about two or three years into it.
Yeah, I mean, the Warrant Finance has already made their recommendations, they've worked their way through all the articles and-
Right, but no, I mean, you can do that on your recommendation.
Yeah, but I just, I would just as soon-
Leave it the way it is.
Run the article the way it is.
I would rather, I caught this at the last minute, you know, after talking to Lankowski, it didn't make a lot of sense to have that line item there, but, you know, I think you're right, Ed, I'd rather not have to have the Finance Committee come back just for one question.
I mean, they've done, they've worked their way through the whole thing.
Right.
I'd rather see us also, for next year, look at either keep going the way we're going with the road, or just make it a town road.
Yeah, which it should have been in the first place.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that might be something for, you know, for next year's discussion.
I just, I just, I want to make, want to make this clear that I'm not singling out the road because I'm singling, or unfortunately, we talked about Flat Ground earlier, so now it kind of looks like it, but the ma- But the math didn't work. You know, we're paying out, uh, these, these line item budgets, but this line item budget's got its own. And it just didn't make any sense to me, and that's why Lankowski told me that we did not need to be doing this.
So you're saying that when they pave Flat Ground, and when they, not pave, sorry, when they plow Flat Ground, they don't pay it out of that line?
No, they don't.
So what do they pay out of that line?
Grading and graveling. And so seeing it's not even really defined and, and after being at the town, uh.
So we could put it.
The other night, they were very concerned on whether there's a definition on what's happening, so um I, I, you know, there should be some sort of definition, they're saying, for grading, for graveling, but there's no definition and it's being paid out of other accounts. So I just, I figured uh after I got the um information from the lawyer, I should have brought this up early, but I, I think you're right, Ed. This is something we do on town floor.
Yeah.
They don't want it under the recommendation. So I guess what I just urge and not to, I hear what you're saying, Ed, is that if you make a recommendation to approve the article as written to three to zero, that's, you know, I mean, then you turn around and, and you make the amendment on town floor.
You may not make the amendment.
No, no, right, and someone may not make it all together, but I'm just saying.
You know, it, it may be something that we just have to make sure that next year is done.
Yeah.
All right, so if you all.
I just wanted to point it out.
Okay, and I can make a note for the treasurer and you guys can talk about it with her. So with that being said, if there's not going to be any change to this article, which is kind of what I hear, then I would encourage you to do 37 through 69 collectively, because as I understand it, there's more than articles that we have concerns with.
I guess we're looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Articles 37 through 69.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
And I will make a motion that we sign the 2022, I guess it is, warrant.
I'll second that.
2122, technically, July 1.
Yep.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Is that ready for you? I'll send an email when it's ready.
All right, thank you. All right, I guess I'm looking for a motion again.
Uh, do you want to do a public comment first?
We could. Do we have any public comment? Okay.
One. You do have someone coming up?
Yep.
Mike Wong, Flat Ground Road. Um, regarding Mr. Lankowski's opinion, he came up with this when Ted Kradzak was on the board, exactly. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, there's a decision came down from MMA that was said given to the town. He said the town, in their opinion, the town, the road was still open. Am I wrong or am I right?
I'm not prepared to answer that. I don't, I don't recall me.
Came down.
I don't recall me in this world, but I'd have to pull the file.
I would just like that investigated because Mr. Lankowski's is just an opinion. It's not based on any fact. It's based on an opinion, an educated opinion, yes. But if MMA is saying it's still open, then that opens a hole in a can of worms. So I would like for the board or whomever to check into it and we'd be all set. Thank you.
The question is, if we, if we have a, already have an opinion on file from MMA, we're not asking them.
No, if there's an opinion already on file.
Certainly. And I have a big folder that certainly, anybody's welcome to come look at, but I will go through it.
Yeah.
All right.
And see if there's anything in there for it.
Okay. Anybody else, sir?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we go to executive session, personnel matter 4056A dash one at 6:40 PM.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
I was talking about Andrew Dean, I didn't follow you.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session at 6:50.
I think she's turning the camera back on.
Oh, sorry.
Because we shut it off now, don't we?
Yep.
All right, perfect.
Make a motion, we come out of executive session at 6:50 PM.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? All righty, well.
I'll take, will you take the lead?
Please do.
Okay, um, we have decided unanimously, I guess it was unanimous.
Yep.
To hire a um secretary for the code office in Land Juice. Uh, we have decided after looking through several applications to hire Ashley Flynn at the rate of $16 an hour. She'll start, what, in another week and a half or so?
That's Monday.
Okay.
14th.
14th. Yep, so.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
17th, my bad.
All, all opposed?
17th.
17th, all right.
I was trying to move it up.
So there.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Well.
Well, we're going to do the, sorry, public.
We did public comments.
I've got my paperwork in the other.
We did public comments, but we got some announcements, so.
Yes, we worked hard on putting these announcements together.
Say that again?
I said we worked hard getting those on there.
Yes, so you want us to, want us to let everybody know?
Absolutely.
What's going on? So on May 6th, we got a public hearing for the shed at 6:30 via Zoom. Um, on the 8th of May, Mary Grant has an 11:00 AM at the Preserve meeting. On the 10th, there's a planning board meeting at 6:00 PM. On the 11th, we've got the rec committee at 5:30. On the 12th, we have the capital improve, capital improvement committee at 5:00 PM. Uh, we have our meeting on the 12th at 6:00. On the 19th, we have another meeting at 6:00. On the 20th, planning board at 6:00. And then on the 26th, board of selectmen again. I think that's it, unless anybody else has any, nope. Okay, well.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Have a good evening, everybody.